...applying to the Sunshine Regulations. This meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posting notices in Better Hall, the Runnymede Post Office, Mary Boldt School, Lyman Bingham School, and Grace Downing School. Please rise in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, board members.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Amy Farah?
Here.
Maria Panterola?
Here.
Patricia Smith?
Here.
Samantha Spalding?
Here.
Lynn Torrell?
Here.
Also present, Dr. Nancy Worf, who pretends to be the school, Julian Augustine, Business Administrator. I don't see him. Ow, sorry. I'm Maureen Gallagher, Principal, Bingham Downing School. Mr. I D G is on his way. And Janet Fiola, Child Study Team Coordinator. First, I need approval of minutes for April 25th, the special meeting on May 2nd and the executive meeting minutes, excuse me, from April 25th.
On exception.
Motion made by Maria. Seconded by Patty. Are there any questions? Roll call.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Amy Farah?
Yes.
Maria Panterola?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Torrell?
Yes.
Call at eight o'clock if you have any other things.
John Ward?
I have seen for both.
Motion carries. Two extensions only on the second. Seven, six, and one. Please wait for your time.
At this time, we need to accept the resignation of Board Member Colleen Herf with regret effective immediately. I need a motion to accept that resignation. Motion made by Patty. Seconded by Maria. Roll call.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Amy Farah?
Yes.
Maria Panterola?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Torrell?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
At this, oh, sorry. At this time, we're moving along to open public comment. At this time, public comment is on agenda items only. If you have any questions, please stand, state your name, address, and please note that we are doing comments per our policy, the three minutes per person. Does anybody have any questions? On agenda items only. No? No? Okay, moving along to reports.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Torrell. My report is somewhat extensive in my effort to help the board understand what's happening with curriculum, New Jersey Core Standards and the Common Core Standards. I'll just summarize them. Enrollment has remained stable. Actually, we had one move in and one move out, so we're the exact same as we were last month. In our move to the Common Core State Standards, I attended a workshop last week, and I thought it was important for me to put some important bullets out here to the Board of Education. There are significant changes that have occurred between the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards and the Common Core State Standards that have been adopted by almost every state. And I've given you a couple of examples as to what those differences will be. We're seeing that the major difference is going to be in mathematics. Where we've been using everyday math, which is a spiral curriculum that builds on itself, it's going to be a curriculum that is more devoted to mastery. So they're looking at it as building blocks. So for instance, kindergarten children will be expected to attain certain standards in kindergarten, and then first grade, eighth grade, going up with higher and higher standards. We have done very well using this curriculum and the standards-based methods of, you know, with everyday math. We've done well, most of the districts of the state have done well. But in an effort to help our children to be more college and career-ready and to refuse more rigor, the Common Core State Standards are a little bit different. So you'll see examples of that right there. One of the major changes that we need to be prepared for is the state assessment, and it's happening by increments with the new Common Core State Standards. As early as next spring, our New Jersey ASK will be aligned to a combination of the Common Core Standards and the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards. In 2014, the following year, it's going to be exclusively aligned to these Common Core State Standards. Fifteen and beyond, it will be a new assessment called the PARK. And that PARK assessment is supposed to be an online assessment, so we are in the process of getting information from us now to see whether or not our technology is going to be ready for that. High school graduation, just so you know, while we might, it might not directly apply to us, it applies to our students because Phase One, our current students that are in high school are going to continue to take the HESPA, which is the current requirement. After this, Phase Two, our current students, grades five to eight, are going to exclusively be taking end-of-course assessments. Entries to college will continue to be SATs, ACTs, and the ACTU Lacer, which is an assessment that's used by community colleges, will become optional. That's actually a good thing. There will be some bridge courses. So what happens is if your child is taking an end-of-course algebra or biology test and they have not passed it, what they will do is, they will, this is the plan, they will be providing specialized courses right there in high school, and then if the student passes them, then that gives them a gateway into at least a community college, if not a four-year program, as opposed to having to pass the ACTU Lacer as well. Students who are currently in fourth grade and below, and I know that affects some of their tier with children who are young, will only be taking end-of-course assessments by the time they're in high school, with bridge courses offered in high school for students who need remediation and want to enter college. So we are planning for this change. The curriculum for all subject areas have been or are being written to align with the standards. The Curriculum Committee met last week, and they're going to have a report tonight regarding some of the progress. Professional development for teachers is also in the planning stages. We're reviewing our current materials. We've been advised to really take a deep look at what we have now and be very, very careful to scrutinize anything new that we purchase because what companies are trying to sell is books, and they will be telling us that they're aligned with the Common Core Standards. We were advised by Penny McCormack, who is the Chief Academic Officer in the State of New Jersey, that we need to do some of our own analysis to see whether or not these textbooks really are aligned to the Common Core State Standards. Take a critical look is what she advises. So a lot of work, the administrative team is going to have to do a lot of work this summer to see whether or not we'll be ready. By next month, I'll have some updates regarding the new teacher evaluation system. So a lot of new things coming down the pipe, things that we really need to focus on. It's my goal to try to keep the board as updated as possible. Also wanted to let you know that there was one incident of HIV recording at both schools. That's attached. Also, you all received a little invitation on the front of your agendas tonight, and that's for the gift and talented art show at the library on Wednesday, June 6th, 6:30. So if anybody can make it, it's a great time. Nice showcase of the students' artwork.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, one more thing, sorry, as I turn the page. You also have a grid attached to the superintendent's report from tonight that really describes what the summer packets are going to be, every grade level. Teachers have got together and developed summer packets, and this is what's going to be in every summer packet this year. Teachers have a variety of different ways that they're going to be expecting this information to come back in a developmental way. Kindergartners will be expected to bring things back and get different types of motivators when they do get back. And when they get into the upper grades, there will be grades assigned for the packets that are turned in. So feel free to take a closer look at that, and Principal's done a nice job of getting that together with your teachers.
Business Administrators Report?
The report is attached to your packet, and just to quickly go over what's on there, my ongoing work with the budget. I also posted the Board candidates, candidates, that's the information for the November election. And just as a reminder, the links are there on our website, and the petitions are due to the county by June 5th. So anyone interested in the petitions that are expiring, time is of the essence. And I also posted the Board vacancy notice as well, and that is due, your letter of interest and your resume is due to my office by the end of month. And in June, we'll be appointing, we'll be interviewing and appointing someone to make a petition to actually be interviewed at the calendar year. And updated the Ed Jobs Fund Cash Management Report. I had the quarterly semi-Medicaid Cost Reporting and Claiming System report to do for January and March. That was submitted. Reviewed and consulted on matters that were involving homeless tuition requests, food service program, insurance benefits, FSA setup, transportation, annual payments and approvals. And also initiated a request to renew our current grant anticipation note that's in the amount of $500,000, which will mature on July 6th, 2012. The renewal unfortunately is necessary since the state's SDA program has yet to respond to our reimbursement request. In addition to that, our state aid payments for the entire month of June will not be received until after July 7th. So it's a necessary, you know, we have to do it at this point. Complete and submit reimbursement request for the fiscal year 1112 IDA grant. Also submitted amendment for the IDA grant, which is on the agenda, and that was to budget some carryover from the prior year. Complete and submit reimbursement request for the 1112 NCLB grant. And attended various county meetings and workshops and trainings from the Department of Ed and ASFO. And just my regular routine activities.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. The Buildings and Ground Report, Principals Report, Nurses Report, and Special Education Reports are attached. Are there any questions on those reports?
I was just wondering, the new drama club, I wasn't able to attend, I was wondering how that might play.
That was a little well, Thursday night, we had a pack.
I think 200 people there Friday night. Thanks.
And then Friday night, it's still a strong crowd. I think total, eight, is it, almost 15?
1500, I think.
Between the two nights, for food, there were some donations given in the door. Did very well.
Nice job. Kids in fourth and fifth grade had the opportunity to watch the whole school there. Enjoy it. Good.
Okay. Any other questions?
My kids left here.
Good luck. Good.
I can burn you a copy of the DVD, like, $5. Trying to build that account.
I think they had a good weekend.
That's great.
Good.
Good. Kansas County Educational Services Commission Report? There isn't a report. New Jersey School Board Association Report?
Okay. On May 19th, I attended the New Jersey School Boards Association Delegate Assembly, and there were several items on the agenda that we needed to vote upon. A few were considerations for the bylaws of the New Jersey School Boards Association to suspend certain bylaws because of the election that's going to be taking place in November. They had to amend certain bylaws for our election of officers and election of their senior officers and their leaders. So those two motions passed. There was a financial report that was given by Donald Webster. I have all those reports with me. He just kind of reported on the finances of the whole association. Our one, one good thing is our school, New Jersey Schools Association dues will not increase next year. They're going to keep at the same frozen. And there was a report by the Urban Schools Committee, and they are a committee that was formed to oversee or give recommendations for new charter schools that may, it may even be popping up. And I have that report, I'll just kind of summarize it, was that their recommendations were that the new charter schools be also come under the scrutiny of Boards of Education, that they have the same type of rules and policies and same type of oversight that the public schools do. And it was also recommended that those boards seek voter approval and school approval within the towns, that those charter schools may be one to start. So it's a whole process, and the urban boards are trying to work with New Jersey School Boards so that they can collectively make some recommendations for schools that are failing in certain areas of New Jersey. I just have two more. One resolution that passed was the New Jersey Wildwood Board of Education submitted a letter to have the manual and policies on education adopt, adapt certain language in their policies that would allow equal access to vocational training to all students, no matter how their test scores came out, and that they wouldn't prohibit children that had disabilities or a hard time taking tests. They would not give preferential treatment just to the high academic achievers. So they're on their way of writing some policies to help the go-text schools with this matter. They're going to try to help legislation also to pass that so that all children can be higher, go to higher education beyond high school. So I thought that was very important, a resolution that passed, because it really means a lot to our special education population. And I think that it's, when we're on Board of Education, we want all children, no matter if they're in our town or other towns, to achieve social skills and also even a career opportunity, that that vocational would give them. So that's my report, and I have the book, if anybody would like to see any of the reports I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Black Horse Pike? Nothing really to report. I'm sorry, I skipped the PTA. Is there anything that needs to be mentioned with the PTA?
Our dance is next week already. The year's over. Can't believe it.
It's next week?
Next weekend.
Next weekend is the part that created. Okay.
Yeah, we're winding down, having a very, very successful year. We have so many people to thank for that, and hopefully moving forward with some new things for next year and more and more help. That's what we want, more and more cooperation with all the organizations and working together with the town, and some things have come to us, so we're excited for a new year next year.
Thank you. Curriculum. We did meet, I was unable to attend. Can we give a little summary real quick? Sorry to put you on the spot.
I think it was a bad, it was a, it was a great meeting. We covered a lot of ground as far as teacher evaluations, Common Core Standards. Overall, I learned a lot.
Yeah, just basically what curriculum entails and how curriculums develop, the different phases of curriculum, what we have to look forward to, and trying to develop all of our curriculum within our district area. Monstrous undertaking.
That's true.
That was, was a whole one, I guess I think we did okay.
Good.
Yeah, if you'd want to say thank you.
Good, thank you. Policy and Public Relations?
Yeah. Just. Reflective to my experience.
Nothing under negotiations. Finance, did not meet. Personnel, did meet. Want to give a summary?
The personnel committee met this week, and we discussed different options on trying to save some money regarding our state mandate from the county with our food service preparation. So those recommendations will be coming out shortly, but we tried to save some money, keep jobs, and make sure that we are within our boundaries with the county.
Yeah. All right. And property did not meet.
Yes. I, I had an opportunity to be involved with the mayor, Youth Mayor and Council Week. It was, it was so good. I was, I really learned a lot, and I was really impressed. I think that Councilman Beatrice, working in partnership with the Civic Association, did a wonderful job. There were seven, there were seven, eighth grade students from Mary Boldt and three from St. Teresa's, and the students were chosen based on essays and their wanting to be involved in politics or in some type of public service. They had a really full week of learning, let me tell you. They went to, they started out, they had a council meeting, and they all got sworn in, and then they had to meet with their various council partners, the regular council people and with their positions, and they had a chance to learn all about polit, not just politics, but how our government works from the municipal level all the way up to the federal level. They went to this, we went to the State House, which was great. There was a former Mary Boldt student who gave us part of a tour, so we got in to see, we got into actually on the floor, instead of looking over the balcony in the State House, where the assembly meets and the senators meet. We actually went into the Senate floor and got to see it up close hand with a student who was involved in that program many years ago, who is now an aide for some of our county, I don't know, our state, state legislature, I guess. And he was wonderful, and we had that opportunity, which was great. We went to the, they went to the State Police Museum in Trenton and the State House, and then we went to see Washington DC. They went to the National Archives, the Supreme Court, which was really, that was really, I've never been there, that was really.
Really enlightening.
The Arlington Cemetery, and we went to various monuments. I was really impressed with the students that were there. They were so respectful. When you go to some of the monuments, you just, they just weren't acting out, nobody was. It was just something that you go and you know, if you're walking by the Vietnam Memorial, that you're not going to talk. It just, it gives goosebumps to you. And they were really impressed with some of the monuments. And I think we went to the National Archives, some of them like that, and some of them, you know, just kind of said, oh, it's the National Archives of the Declaration of Independence were there, and they were like, more like a museum, where you had to actually look at things. But they, they enjoyed it, and I really think they learned a lot. They had to write an essay at the end on their experience. They were well-written, knowing they had to read them in public to their parents and whoever else came, and they presented them so well. Their public speaking skills were excellent. And they definitely demonstrated, what I saw were leadership skills, teamwork, that nobody, there was no behavior issues, they watched out for one another, and they were respectful of one another. Not all were, you know, all friends, they were in different groups, so it was really, really an excellent opportunity, and they are, you could tell that they're going to be our future leaders in whatever endeavor of public service they want to go into, or whatever they want to go into. They were excellent. I was really proud, just they were students from Mary Boldt and St. Teresa's. It was wonderful.
Thank you for sharing that. Okay, so new business. Property and Transportation, we need a motion to approve the, well, we don't need to approve that? Yes, we need to approve it, but they were rescheduled due to inclement weather, the fuel trip. So I need a motion and a second, please.
I'm going to do it.
Motion made by Angel.
Second.
Seconded by Maria. Roll call.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Amy Farah?
Yes.
Maria Panterola?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Torrell?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries. Also need approval for the use of facilities, the three things listed there. Need a motion? Motion made by Patty.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Sure. Do you want to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention, the foundation is meeting a lot, and that's because they're doing a fun finance and fitness day on June 2nd, and they've been working really hard to make it happen, so I just want to invite everybody to attend one that day. I think they're going to have the activities for the kids, Trenton High School's involved, coming to help out, and a lot of other things. And other than paying and food, it's not going to cost anybody a dime. So it'll be a great day.
Thank you. Roll call.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Amy Farah?
Yes.
Maria Panterola?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Torrell?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
All right. Under Personnel, I need a motion to approve items number one through seven, there's six and seven on the new agenda. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve items number seven.
Motion, thank you, made by Angel.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Just for the board, I just asked Dr. Ward in number five, that stipend was originally left out of the list of stipends. That's why that's there. And I also would like to publicly thank Mrs. Linda Hurd for all of her years and everything that she has done for the Runnymede children. I mean, I know she was my favorite teacher ever. I had her in second grade at Downey, and wish her the best of luck in retirement. Any other questions? Roll call.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Amy Farah?
Yes.
Maria Panterola?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Torrell?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Finance, I need a motion to approve items number one through eight, five to eight were added.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items one through eight under Finance. Second.
Motion made by Naomi, seconded by Maria. Are there any questions? Roll call.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Amy Farah?
Yes.
Maria Panterola?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Torrell?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under Curriculum, we had one summer art camp at Bingham School added, so I need a motion to approve. Motion made by Maria.
Second.
Seconded by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Amy Farah?
Yes.
Maria Panterola?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Torrell?
Yes.
And John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Policy and Public Relations, we have one policy for the first reading, number 7510, facility use, need a motion?
I'll make it.
Motion made by Patty.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lynn. Any questions? Roll call.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Amy Farah?
Yes.
Maria Panterola?
I believe I'm required to abstain.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Torrell?
Yes.
And John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good morning, gentlemen.
We're now going to move along to the annual Board Approvals and Appointments, so I'm going to need a motion, and then I have to read the actual, every letter, and then we need to roll call. So right now, I need a motion and a second for letter A.
I'll make a motion for letter A.
Second. Motion made by Angel, seconded by Amy. On a motion by Angel Bebe, seconded by Amy Farah, approval is made of the official depositories for the funds of the Board of Education at PNC Bank. Roll call.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Amy Farah?
Yes.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson. Maria Panterola.
Yes.
Yes.
Amy Farre.
Yes.
Maria Panterola.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Torrell.
Yes.
And John Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving along to the letter D, I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Maria.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. I'll switch it up. On a motion made by Maria Panterola, seconded by Naomi Davidson, approval is made of the following and are hereby designated as official newspapers and methods advertising of this Board until the next reorganization meeting. The retrospect, carrier post and the district website via the internet. Roll call.
Angel BB.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Amy Farre.
Yes.
Maria Panterola.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Torrell.
Yes.
And John Ward.
Yes.
Need a motion for E.
Make a motion.
Next, motion made by John. Seconded by Patty. On a motion made by John Ward, seconded by Patty Smith, approval is made of the following. Being resolved by the Runnymede Board of Education, County of Camden, New Jersey, that the following be a shock for tell and the medical inspector of this Board of Education at a rate of $5,554 from July 1st, 2012 to June 30th, 2013. Roll call.
Is that the same organization?
Yes.
Maybe you're reading wrong here.
I remember I seen it last year. I just really didn't raise it. Agreed.
Angel BB.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Amy Farre.
Yes.
Maria Panterola.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Torrell.
Yes.
And John Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries. Need a motion for F.
Make a motion.
Motion made by John. Seconded by Patty. On a motion made by John Ward, seconded by Patty Smith, approval is made of the following and are hereby designated as official newspapers and methods advertising of this Board until the next reorganization meeting. The retrospect, carrier post and the district website via the internet. Roll call.
Angel BB.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Amy Farre.
Yes.
Maria Panterola.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Torrell.
Yes.
And John Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries. Need a motion for E.
Make a motion.
Next, motion made by John. Seconded by Patty. On a motion made by John Ward, seconded by Patty Smith, approval is made of the following. Be resolved by the Runnymede Board of Education, County of Camden, New Jersey, that the business administrator or Board Secretary be and is hereby appointed as the person to approve purchase order contracts between meetings for the 2012-2013 school year. Roll call.
Angel BB.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Amy Farre.
Yes.
Maria Panterola.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Torrell.
Yes.
And John Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries. Need a motion for F.
Make a motion.
Motion made by John.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. On a motion made by John Ward, seconded by Naomi Davidson, approval is made of the following. Being resolved by the Runnymede Board of Education, County of Camden, New Jersey, that the business administrator slash superintendent, principal, child study team coordinator, school nurse and any other staff member designated by the chief school administrator slash superintendent are designated as personnel authorized to transport pupils in an emergency. Roll call. Yes.
Yes.
You have a question?
No, no. Well.
We did the motion.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Okay.
Is there a list, like, in each of schools who would be able to? You know, if we're saying that the chief school administrator?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just saying, for liability reasons, should that not be available or saying appointed by? Would that be something predetermined or something that you wait until an emergency happens and say, I appointed them?
No, no.
No.
In instances where it's a school, the principal can either do it or make the determination that somebody appropriate in the school. So it would really only be, what if?
Okay.
The nurse and the principal were out and a child needed to be transported, I could designate somebody.
Yeah, I'm talking about.
Good question. Roll call.
Angel BB.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Amy Farre.
Yes.
Maria Panterola.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Torrell.
Yes.
And John Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries. Need a motion for I.
I need a motion for I.
On a motion made, motion by Angel BB, seconded by Maria Panterola, approval is made of the following. Being resolved by the Runnymede Board of Education, County of Camden, New Jersey, that the business administrator slash Board Secretary be appointed treasurer of school monies of the Board of Education for the 2012-2013 school year at a yearly stipend of $2,967. Every year before. She's not paying attention. There's no rings over there. Roll call.
I'm sorry.
I made a question.
No roll. No rings there.
No rings.
Roll call.
Same last year and you're.
In case you rang.
You're not.
Yes. Did you answer last year? I always do. Seen she's at the air before.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Amy Farre.
Yes.
Maria Panterola.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Torrell.
Yes.
And John Ward.
Yes.
Need a motion for L.
L, I need a motion. Second.
On a motion made by Patty Smith, seconded by Naomi Davidson, approval is made of the following. Being resolved by the Runnymede Board of Education, County of Camden, New Jersey, that the business administrator slash superintendent, principal, child study team coordinator, school nurse and any other staff member designated by the chief school administrator slash superintendent are designated as personnel authorized to transport pupils in an emergency. Roll call. Yes.
Yes.
You have a question?
No, no. Well.
We did the motion.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Okay.
Is there a list, like, in each of schools who would be able to? You know, if we're saying that the chief school administrator?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just saying, for liability reasons, should that not be available or saying appointed by? Would that be something predetermined or something that you wait until an emergency happens and say, I appointed them?
No, no.
No.
In instances where it's a school, the principal can either do it or make the determination that somebody appropriate in the school. So it would really only be, what if?
Okay.
The nurse and the principal were out and a child needed to be transported, I could designate somebody.
Yeah, I'm talking about.
Good question. Roll call.
Angel BB.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Amy Farre.
Yes.
Maria Panterola.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Torrell.
Yes.
And John Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries. Need a motion for I.
I need a motion for I.
On a motion made, motion by Angel BB, seconded by Maria Panterola, approval is made of the following. Being resolved by the Runnymede Board of Education, County of Camden, New Jersey, that the business administrator slash Board Secretary designated as the individual to authorize line item, line item changes between board meetings. Roll call.
Angel BB.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Amy Farre.
Yes.
Maria Panterola.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Torrell.
Yes.
And John Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries. Need a motion for J.
Make a motion.
Motion made by John, seconded by Patty. On a motion made by John Ward, seconded by Patty Smith, approval is made of the following. Being resolved by the Runnymede Board of Education, County of Camden, New Jersey, the Board approves the attendance of newly elected or appointed board members at the Board Members' Orientation Conference sponsored by the New Jersey School Board Association. Roll call.
Angel BB.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Amy Farre.
Yes.
Maria Panterola.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Torrell.
Yes.
And John Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries. Need a motion for J.
Make a motion.
Motion made by John, seconded by Patty. On a motion made by John Ward, seconded by Patty Smith, approval is made of the following. Being resolved by the Runnymede Board of Education, County of Camden, New Jersey, the Board approves the attendance of newly elected or appointed board members at the Board Members' Orientation Conference sponsored by the New Jersey School Board Association. Roll call.
Angel BB.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Amy Farre.
Yes.
Maria Panterola.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Torrell.
Yes.
And John Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries. Need a motion for L.
L, I need a motion. Second.
On a motion made by Patty Smith, seconded by Naomi Davidson, approval is made of the following. Being resolved by the Runnymede Board of Education, County of Camden, New Jersey, that the business administrator be appointed purchasing agent for the district. Roll call.
Angel BB.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Amy Farre.
Yes.
Maria Panterola.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Torrell.
Yes.
And John Ward.
Yes.
Need a motion for L.
L, I need a motion. Second.
On a motion made by Patty Smith, seconded by Naomi Davidson, approval is made of the following. Being resolved by the Runnymede Board of Education, County of Camden, New Jersey, that the business administrator be appointed purchasing agent for the district. Roll call.
Angel BB.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Amy Farre.
Yes.
Maria Panterola.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Torrell.
Yes.
And John Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion for M.
I'll make a motion for M.
Second.
On a motion by Angel Bebe, seconded by Maria Panzarella, approval is made of the following. Being resolved by the Rummy Board of Education, County of Camden, New Jersey, that Marie Gallagher, Principal, be appointed Affirmative Action Officer and Five-O-Four Committee Coordinator for the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen school year. Roll call.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Amy Farah?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion for N.
I'll make a motion for N.
On a motion made by Angel Bebe, seconded by Patty Smith, approval is made of the following. Being resolved, the Rummy Board of Education, County of Camden, New Jersey, that the Open Public Meetings Act requires that advanced written notice of all meetings of the Board of Education be posted in one public place designated by the Board and mailed, telephoned, faxed, or hand-delivered to two newspapers designated by resolution. Mailed to all persons requesting a copy of same upon payment of a fee as established by NJSA forty-seven colon one A dash two. Therefore, being resolved by the Rummy Board of Education as follows. Number one, all advanced written notices of board meetings shall be posted by the Board Secretary on the bulletin board located in Mary Bold School, Grace Downing Elementary School, and Line Bangham School, and the Line Bangham School. Number two, all advanced written notices of board meetings shall be given to the following two newspapers. The Retrospect as our official newspaper and the Carrier Post. Number three, filing written notice with the clerk of Rummy Borough. Number four, all advanced written notices of board meetings throughout the year shall be mailed to all persons requesting a copy of the same after payment by such persons of a fee as established in NJSA forty-seven colon one A dash two, plus postage. News media shall be exempt from such fee. And number five, the schedule of regular official board meetings for the period from and after this reorganization meeting until a reorganization meeting in two thousand and thirteen shall be in accordance with the listed schedules designating the dates, times, and places of such meetings. Roll call.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Amy Farah?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
And John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion for O.
Make a motion.
Second. On a motion made by John Ward, seconded by Patty Smith, approval was made for the appointments of board members as representatives to New Jersey School Boards Association, which will remain with Naomi, Camden County School Boards Association, which will also remain with Naomi, and we will determine someone for Camden County Educational Services Commission. Roll call.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Do I have to stay in that? Because that's the name of our...
No.
No.
Okay. Yes. Amy Farah?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
And John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion for P.
I'll make a motion.
Sure.
On a motion made by Lynn Terrell, seconded by John Ward, approval was made for the New Jersey School Board Association Insurance Group to be named insurance of record for the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen school year. Roll call.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Amy Farah?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion for Q.
Make a motion.
Second. On a motion by Patty Smith, seconded by Amy Farah, approval was made for Omni to serve as third-party administrator for four oh three B plans for the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen school year. Roll call.
Excuse me, is that our turn?
Yes.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Amy Farah?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion for R.
I'll make a motion for R. I'll second the motion.
On a motion by Patty Smith, seconded by Lynn Terrell, approval was made for the following. Being resolved by the Rummy Board of Education, County of Camden, New Jersey, that the Business Administrator slash Supervisor be appointed, excuse me, indoor air quality designee, integrated pest management coordinator, right-to-know officer, chemical hygiene officer, and adherer coordinator for the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen school year.
I have a question.
Yes.
If this, does he have all the certifications necessary to be appointed? Are there certifications necessary?
No, not for any of these, and he's taking the training for the FS, the Facilities Certificate. However, the one that was for asbestos, as far as doing the inspection, he doesn't have that certificate, but it's not required because the asbestos inspection, you would just have some...
I have a question. What does the A H E R A acronym stand for?
That's the asbestos.
It's asbestos?
Yeah, so he's being appointed as the coordinator, that's why you can't, so he would be in charge of getting the inspection done.
Okay.
He's in charge.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Amy Farah?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Need a...
Motion carries.
Thank you. Need a motion for S?
I'll make a motion.
And a second.
A second.
On a motion by Maria Panzarella, seconded by Angel Bebe, approval was made. Business Administrator slash Board Secretary as Agency Compliance Officer for the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen school year. Roll call.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Amy Farah?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Terrell?